I'd like to open up the hearing December 3, 2020, Zoning Board of Appeals for our working session. We have four items on the agenda before we have the public hearing. But I just wanted to note, as to the public hearing, if anyone is on either the call-in or is on this, number 11 on the continued docket 30 Daybreak Road, that has been continued and that will be taken up at our next hearing. And pursuant to, in light of COVID-19 and pursuant to Executive Order 7B from Governor Lamont, we're conducting this meeting and the public hearing by remote means, teleconference only for people calling in or people that are applicants that are on the this meeting for WebEx. So the first item that we have on the agenda for executive is approval minutes from November 12, 2020. I know we were emailed those yesterday by Josephine. entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing discussion, all in favor? You're gonna have to unmute yourselves. When the board say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Side of the approval secretary, please entertain a motion to approve. Who is that, Brian?
Yep.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion. Okay, hearing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Motion carries. Next is public hearing dates, submission closing dates for 2021. Entertain a motion to approve those dates.
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion. No discussion, bring it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? None? Motion carries. Next, pursuant to our town charter, each December, we need to elect our officers of the zoning board of appeals. At this time, open up nominations for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Kevin. As chairman.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any other nominations for chair? Entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, second?
Second.
Great, discussion on the closed nominations. All in favor say aye.
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 None? Okay, nominations. A vote on chairman? All in favor say aye of the only nominee.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I accept that.
You win.
Now open up for vice chair. I'd like to nominate Jerry Keegan for vice chair. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Brian has seconded. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Entertain a motion to close nominations for vice chair. Thank you, Brian, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on closing nominations. Okay, all in favor of closing nominations say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, nominations are closed. All in favor of continuing on as vice chair, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Sorry, I didn't offer extensions for my voting. Sorry about that. Congratulations, Terry, your vice chair again. Now open up nominations for secretary. I'd like to nominate. Is there a second? Brian? Any other nominations? Any other nominations for secretary? Hearing now, entertain a motion to close nominations for secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Someone needs to mute their line.
Yeah, he opposed?
Okay, sorry.
Any extensions? Thank you, Jane, for continuing on. Now, that will bring us to, closes that, we'll reconvene our working session after the public hearing. And now, I will call to order our public hearing. In light of COVID-19 and pursuant to Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B, we are conducting the public hearing via teleconference only. Instructions are on the website and people were advised of how to call in or how to sign in, an applicant, or whether you're interested in a particular matter. Before I call the meeting to order, I will note, I just did, but just in case someone joined, number 11 on the continued docket 30 Daybreak Road has been continued to our next hearing, which will be in January. And now call to order December 3, 2020, Zoning Board of Appeals. When I call the matter, the applicant or their agent, after I call the matter, after I'm done speaking, you can present your application at that time. Please, else should be on mute, including our board members. Unless, we open it up until, for questions from the board members. But I only want the applicant to unmute themselves. So I want to make sure we don't have any interference so everyone can hear. So please, respect that. I will give a lot of time during the hearing to make sure we have heard everything that you want to offer. We have received all of your information and if there's something that you want to share, you could email it to the town, their website. I just spoke with Mr. Deppard on this. If there's something you need to share, just let us know and we will share it on the screen. But your application in the packet has been distributed to each of the board members. So during your presentation, if you want to refer to something, just identify it by the type of document it is, whether it's a map, photographs, your petitions, and we will have it so that way you can refer to it. After the applicant's presentation, I will then ask if anyone is in favor of the application, I will afford them an opportunity to address the board. After that, I will afford anyone, anyone, an opportunity who opposes that application to address the board as well. If there is any opposition, I will allow the applicant or his or her agent to address that opposition. That's a time to address only the oppositions, to rebut those comments, answer those questions from people that may oppose it or just to address the comments and oppositions to your application. It's not a time to restate your application. The meeting is being recorded, taped, and that's necessary for state law, by our state law. So it's very important, especially in the manner in which we're doing this. Because sometimes things can break up, sometimes things can be choppy. If you're present, you're being, you're doing the presentation, we may interrupt you to make sure, I may interrupt you to make sure that it's clear, I want to make sure it's clear. Anyone who does speak, need to give your name and address. You know, for some people on call-in, we can't see you on the video, on the, on the screen. So you have to verbalize everything for us and it's important even when you're on screen to verbalize. You know, if we ask you a question from the board, you can't shake your head, yes or no. You need to verbalize it so it's recorded properly. And anyone who does speak, make sure you're to the point on the issues that have reported this board regarding zoning regulations and a request of variance. If you are too far off the point, I reserve my ways to restrict your comments at any time. The applications will be, we get what goes forward today, we will entertain them, it goes forward, we will entertain them. Go on it. After. Board members for the board, in order for your application granted, you need a super joint, you need at least four of you to vote for your application. We need, yeah, so four people, three to two, vote. That's not going to cut it. Your application would be denied. You need at least four in favor of it. You can either stay on the line, wait a minute, call the zoning office to find out after tomorrow or later to find out what happened. If your application is granted, it will not be valid until it's recorded. Therefore, in order for that to happen, you need to send $60 to the town, $60 check that may payable to the town and present it to the zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting. It will allow for proper recording of the notice. Any waiver that involves construction will require an as-built before certificate of zoning compliance or a certificate of occupancy can be issued by the town. I'll call the first item and that is 160 Pine Creek Avenue, map 238, parcel 36, petition of David Tortorella for variance of zoning regulations, section 11.11.2, to reduce the sideline setback from five feet, currently 5.4 feet, proposing 1.2 feet. Permission to construct a platform for a standalone generator premises, BD zone. And I think an agent is.
You're a loser.
That.
Kevin, I don't, I don't see that, Kevin.
That's what we had last time, right?
Yes, it's the same thing. And I, I sent out messages to both the owner and the, and the applicant this week and didn't hear anything back. So, I mean, this is the third month.
All right, well, I'll, I'll pass it. I'll keep it here front and center. To do that, they might submit.
Here's the. Say, Kevin?
Yes.
Disagreement?
They need to, they need to present, it needs to go forward. We need an application, we got to create a record. Because if someone wants to appeal and there's no record, nothing we can do. A, we'll pass that, number seven, for now. Matt, remind me again so I don't forget. I'll do my best.
Yes. I will do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And like I said earlier, number 11 on the continued docket 30 Daybreak Road is continued to the January docket. First matter on the general docket is 59 Craig Court, map 139, parcel 2, petition of Kristen Bruno for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the rear line setback from 30 feet, currently 16.8 feet, proposing 16.6 feet. And section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 26.5%, proposing 29.3%. Permission to extend an existing rear elevated deck premises, a zone. Is the applicant or agent on 59 Craig Court here? I think Mr. Heinz.
Yeah, he was supposed, Mr. Chairman, he's supposed to call in. He said he was going to have some issues. So let me unmute the call-ins to see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, is that?
Okay, yes, this is Josh Heinz, 59 Craig Court, for the deck expansion.
Yep, you're ready to, we're ready for it.
Yes. So we have an existing two-story deck. It's in, you know, the beach zone. So first level is about nine feet two inches off grade. Second level, I believe, is 18 and change off grade. We are looking to expand the deck on either side to the width of the house. Right now, it's about 13 and a half feet wide. We're looking to expand that approximately two feet and change to the east, well northeast, and about three feet to the southwest, to expand the deck to the width of the house, making it approximately 18 feet wide. In addition to that, we're looking to add a landing from the first level with stairs going toward Craig Court, basically right next to the home. There are 42 inches wide of the tread and approximately 10 risers. Kind of depends on where, you know, where it falls in grade.
All right, is that the end of your, your presentation, Mr. Heinz?
I believe, you know, we were, we're not compliant as, well, we're zoned. Sorry, there's exceptions to non-compliance of the lot coverage already. I speak with Matt, Mr. Decker. He said that would be one hardship and honestly, off the top of my head, I don't remember the other. There was an additional hardship in place that I just honestly, I don't remember off the top of my head. I'm currently remote and not in front of my computer.
Okay. All right, does the board have any questions for Mr. Heinz? Okay. No questions, Mr. Heinz. He escaped some questions. Like to see if there's anyone that was to speak in favor of the application or oppose the application. If there's anyone on call-in, please speak up, let us know.
I don't see anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Okay, that closes our hearing for 59 Craig Court. Thank you very much, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too. Next item that we have is number 2. 5 Beaconview Drive, map 42, parcel 625, that is an apple. Petition of Michelle Martin for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the side and rear line setbacks from 15 feet and 30 feet, currently 9.8 feet and 23.1 feet. And section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage, lot coverage and total floor area from 15% and 30%, currently 26.09 and 34.8%. Permission to legitimize a rear addition premises, R3 zone. And is Ms. Martin or her agent on the line? Matt, have you seen, was Ms. Martin going to present? You're still on mute.
Yep, I just, Mr. Chairman, I do see her on here. I just sent a request to unmute her. I'm waiting for her to do that.
Is she on a call-in?
Yep.
Yes.
Unmuted. There she is.
Good afternoon, I'm so sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is Michelle Martin, at 5 Beaconview Drive and thanks for giving me the opportunity to present my appeal. My lot is a single family, is located in a single family R3 district. And so along with the rest of my neighborhood, I have a legal, non-conforming half-duplex of a two-family dwelling. And the minimum lot size and square required for this district is 20,000 square feet and 100 foot square. And my lot actually consists of 4,097 square feet and has a square of 38 feet. So aside from not realizing that my contractor never pulled a permit for the work performed to partially enclose the deck to construct a dining room, the existing size of my lot is my hardship. And so that's my presentation for today.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Martin? Yep.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Somehow I'm getting double audio, so it's a little difficult. But my question is, when was that addition put on?
Well, this was, I believe, back in 2007. And so there was a reasonable-sized deck that was on the exterior on the wear of the house. So that was partially enclosed to construct the dining room.
And there was no permit pulled, so.
Yes, I, I, yes, actually, that is, that is correct. I thought the contractor was taking care of everything, so I didn't realize that that wasn't done.
I mean, technically, the owner is responsible for making sure that a permit is pulled. Oh, well. No more questions.
Well, I mean, the only other thing I could add, if it helps, is that this was the first time ever that I've had any kind of construction done on a house. So I really wasn't aware, although, yes, it probably was my responsibility to educate myself regarding their requirements and so forth. So I, I honestly had no idea. I just left it up to the contractor to take care of everything. So I wasn't aware, I just recently became aware of that, that there was no permit pulled. So, you know, this is my attempt to rectify the situation to the best of my ability.
That's it, I just got a notice to unmute myself. So luckily, Ms. Martin, because I was still muted, you got to add to your answer. So. Any other questions from the board? Okay. And so, more other questions? Or anyone that was to speak in favor of the application? 5 Beaconview Drive, or in opposition? Anyone in favor or in opposition to this application? 5 Beaconview Drive. All right, Mr. Decker.
Anyone, Mr. Chairman?
No. So, no comments in favor or in opposition? So, Ms. Martin, we're going to close our hearing. We'll be at the end of our public hearing to be voting on it, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? Sure. My audio is screwed up, somehow I'm signed it twice. And I'd like to close everything and rejoin. Can you give me 30 seconds to do that?
Of course.
Okay, I'm going to do that right now.
Anyone who is speaking in the very near future, like the next application, please mute yourself. I see a couple people that are still have, have a red mute next. So I want to see red mutes on everyone except for me and the person presenting.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
No.
I'm gonna go off again. Do you need to see me? Otherwise, I'll just stay like this.
If that's working better so you can hear, that's fine.
Yes, I'm going to stay with this. I don't want to delay the meeting any longer.
You'll just have to make sure you speak up and let me know if you have a question instead of waving. I won't see.
Okay, I will, thank you very much.
Okay. Remember what I said, there's a few people, I don't know if you're speaking on the next one, but if you're not, which is Roland, Roland Road, please mute yourselves because we'll get a little feedback, the more people that are open. Next item, number 3, 738 Roland Road, map 184, parcel 101. A petition of Catherine Pelosi for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 34.3%, proposing 35.1%. And section 5.2.4, to reduce the sum of two sideline setbacks at 20 feet, currently 18.2 feet, proposing 16.9 feet. Permission to construct a FEMA-compliant elevated rear deck with stairs, premises, a zone. I think Mr. Stern is presenting this.
He is, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try to find him on one of the calls. Are you available? He was having trouble signing in before, Mr. Chairman, and I gave him the phone number to call in.
Yeah, he's on the, he's on the call-in line, Matt, can you hear me?
I can hear you on the line, yes. What number is he?
Oh, he just dropped off, so he must be trying the other, the other call-in line, but he was, oh, no, he's on this line. He's in the call-in line. He's unmuted.
Okay. He's unmuted? Okay. Peter, can you hear us?
Hello?
Peter, yay, Peter, there you go, great. Peter?
Hello?
Can you hear us, Peter? Okay, Peter? You still with us, Peter?
We just heard him a second ago.
Yeah, he was just there. Hold on one second.
He shows up as call-in user 10, I believe.
Okay, he's calling right back. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Hello?
You there, Peter?
Hello?
You there, Peter?
Hello, yes. Good, hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Matt, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Peter, can you hear us? Peter?
Hello?
We hear you.
Peter?
Hello, hello?
Hello?
Peter?
Anybody?
Peter, we're here, can you hear us? Peter? Okay. Peter, can you hear us? All right, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll give him a call personally and tell him to try back later on. We'll push him toward the end, okay?
Yep, I'll keep number 3, we'll recall that at, at the end. We're passing that for now, number 3. Recalling 738 Roland Road. Mr. Stern?
Peter? Okay, Mr. Chairman, he did not get back on yet.
All right.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Continue to pass. We'll pick up on number five, 23 High Meadow Road, map 228, parcel four, petition of T. and Ann Leffert for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the rear line setback for an accessory structure from 40 feet, proposing 23 feet. Permission to construct an in-ground pool premises double A zone. Are the Leffert, there's Ms. Leffert. You unmute yourself, please. Unmute yourself, Ms. Leffert.
I was using the phone. Can you hear me on the phone?
Yes, we can. That's perfect. Go ahead, ma'am. Oh, you canceled that one.
All right, I'll have to use the computer. It's, you can't hear me when I unmute it. Hi, I'm Ann Leffert, 23 High Meadow Road. We have a home on a pre-existing legal-conforming lot. We're in a one-acre double A zone. Our lot, minimum lot size is required to be an acre, 43,560 square feet. My lot has only 29,601 square feet as a legal-conforming lot. I'm sorry?
Kevin, you're muted. We can hear you, but the chairman's muted.
Yeah. Emmeline, can you, Goodman, they were getting the noise. They left their... There we go. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Leffert.
Okay, do you hear the beginning part?
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay, all right. So in addition to the fact that we are a non-conforming lot, we are also located on a corner lot. Also, when the house was constructed in 1957, it was designed with a septic system that has since been abandoned and connected to the town sewer line. The sewer line runs, it traverses across the backyard, coming off right about where the, where the deck and the stairs are on the map that you see there. Comes out right about there and cuts across the backyard. So we're pushing the pool into the back corner. There is a fence along the backyard, and there is a stand of trees along the right-hand side of the map where the pool would fit. For me to comply with that 40-foot setback, I would be in the middle of an abandoned septic field and where the current sewer line now exists. So we're not able to, to put the pool any further into the yard. I did provide some photographs, and I don't know if all of you have a copy of them, but I did a photograph of the side of the yard where the tree line is, and also so you could see the narrowness of the backyard. We're having trouble conforming to both setbacks in that corner. So we're requesting to reduce that 40-foot back lot setback to 23 feet.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Leffert. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Leffert? All right, having no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or opposed to this application, which is 23 High Meadow Road?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Goodman. That closes the hearing on 87 Sasko Hill Road. We'll be taking that up later to vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your time.
Left yourself on, so we went up and mute that, Matt. There it goes.
She's muted, yep. So, Mr. Stern, can you hear us? Okay, go on to the next one then, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about that.
Number six, 86 Lockwood Road, map 46, parcel 190, petition of Peter and Tina Lynch for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street and rear line setbacks from 40 feet and 30 feet, currently 25.8 feet and 39.8 feet, proposing 28.5 feet and 27.5 feet. And section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 15% currently, 17.8%, proposing 21%. Permission to construct a front and rear two-story addition premises R3 zone. Are the Lynch's on?
I'm here.
See you. Go ahead.
Peter Lynch, we own the property at 86 Lockwood Road. Our house was constructed in 1940, and it predates today's zoning laws. The lot is undersized for R3 residential zone. And the addition that we're doing will not deviate from the look of the neighborhood. We're going to continue the same line of the house from looking from the front. I have also gotten signature sign-offs from all the adjoining neighbors and have submitted a copy of that with our application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Lynch?
Okay, hearing no questions.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against the, this application, which is 86 Lockwood Road?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Leffert. We're closing the hearing on 23 High Meadow Road. We'll be taking that up later to vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your time.
Left yourself on, so we went up and mute that, Matt. There it goes.
She's muted, yep. So, Mr. Stern, can you hear us? Okay, go on to the next one then, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about that.
Number six, 86 Lockwood Road, map 46, parcel 190, petition of Peter and Tina Lynch for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet and 30 feet, currently 25.8 feet and 39.8 feet, proposing 28.5 feet and 27.5 feet. And section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 15% currently, 17.8%, proposing 21%. Permission to construct a front and rear two-story addition premises R3 zone. Are the Lynch's on?
I'm here.
See you. Go ahead.
Peter Lynch, we own the property at 86 Lockwood Road. Our house was constructed in 1940, and it predates today's zoning laws. The lot is undersized for R3 residential zone. And the addition that we're doing will not deviate from the look of the neighborhood. We're going to continue the same line of the house from looking from the front. I have also gotten signature sign-offs from all the adjoining neighbors and have submitted a copy of that with our application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Lynch? Okay, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against the, this application, which is 86 Lockwood Road?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Lynch, we're going to be closing the hearing on 86 Lockwood Road, and we'll be taking this up later when we vote, discuss, and vote each matter. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Number seven, 464 Riverside Drive, map 130, parcel 126, petition of Michael DeRosa for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 30 feet currently, 20.1 feet proposing, 20.1 feet. And section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage and total floor area from 20% and 40% currently, 22.5% and 23.7%, proposing 28.2% and 41.8%. Permission to construct the second floor and two-story addition with stairs and landing premises A zone. I think Mr. Chase is presenting this.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Okay, hello, thanks for hearing your application. Gary Chase, I'm with Christian Ray Studio. We're presenting an application for Michael DeRosa. Mike's lived there for almost four years now and is looking to get a little bit of additional living space in the home. So he's hired us to design an addition on the back of the house, roughly 27 by 18, as he mentioned. That will consist of a kitchen living space on the first floor and a master addition above that on the second floor. He will also be lifting the house to make it FEMA compliant. The house will be lifted about five feet to do so. In order to achieve this, the two variances that will be required, the front step-back, this is partly to legitimize what's there. Currently, the house sits at 20, about 20 feet with the 30 feet being required. We're keeping that front house, front face of the house as is. Obviously, it's just getting lifted up. So really, that's just being legitimized. However, as a result of the raise, we are adding some additional steps, and those steps will come to about seven feet off the front property line. Those will not be counting against our coverage as a result of the raise. In addition to that is lot coverage and floor area. The house, as it sits, is already over the allowable at 22.5%. With our proposed work, we're looking at 28.2%. Floor area will be increased and will be slightly over the allowable at 41.8%. Our hardship is mainly the loss of usable lot area due to the tidal wetlands in the back. The gross lot size is a little over 11,000 square feet, but when you net it out, we're at about 4,700 square feet, even well below the minimum required lot area at 93.75. Now, if we were to just for argument's sake, consider the 93.75 as minimum allowed lot area, what we're proposing here would be, as of right, would be within our, within our limits. Our coverage in that scenario would be about 14 and 1/2%, and our floor area would be at about 21%, so well below the allowable. Beyond that, to be, the, in terms of the design of the home, we're not asking for anything beyond that. The building height is, as of right, the house is based, the roof of the house is basically just going to be extended backwards. So we're not expanding the height at all. And all the new addition areas will conform to required setbacks. And we're basically building over top of an existing deck in the rear of the home. So for all intents and purposes, what's already disturbed, we'll be building on top of that, so we won't be disturbing any area further back towards the marsh. And the design of the house, it'll be getting some new sidings and new windows, will all be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And obviously, as I mentioned before, raising the house, it'll be FEMA compliant, you know, which is for the benefit of everyone. You guys should have also received the neighbor petition. We've received support from the neighbors on either side of us, as well as one across the street. There's only one immediate neighbor that we weren't able to get a signature from, but we tried multiple times. And that concludes my presentation.
Hey, Mr. Chase, does the board have any questions for Mr. Chase? Does there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or opposed to this application, which is 464 Riverside Drive?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. We're going to close the hearing on 464 Riverside Drive. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. DeRosa. And we'll be picking that back up when we're voting. Is, do we have number three?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Peter Stern is available, if he can hear us.
Can you hear me, guys?
Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear us? It's more important.
I can hear you, Matt.
Very good. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear the chairman, Kevin Coy? Mr. Stern, can you hear Kevin Coy? That's me. I'm talking right now.
He was just there. Oh, so close.
Matt, he looked like he just dropped off. He was on, he was on the line. I don't know what happened.
Well, Mr. Chairman, would you like to try something different? And I could try to call him, and he can speak into my microphone?
Yeah, we could try that if it works.
Let's take a quick hander at that.
It looks like he's back, Matt, if you want...
Okay, great. Which one is he?
Pete Stern, can you, can you speak loud?
Can you hear me? Can anybody hear me now? Hello? Matt, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Mr. Stern?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great.
Yes, sir.
How are you? Good afternoon.
Mr. Stern, I'm going to...
Can anybody hear me?
Just wait one second.
Hello?
This is Kevin Coy. I'm the chairman.
Hi, Kevin. I'm on a landline, and it's coming in and out for whatever reason. Right now, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I'll tell you when to start speaking, but right now officially on recalling 738 Roland Road, it's petition by Catherine Pelosi, and it's for a FEMA-compliant elevated rear deck with stairs. I've already made the full call. I don't need to do it again. Mr. Stern, I'm ready to present your application for Ms. Pelosi. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. So looking to construct a 12 by 16 deck connecting to the first floor. So the pre-existing conditions of the lot are non-conforming. If you look at the survey, you'll see the irregular shape of the lot. It's very long and goes...
Eight feet proposing twenty eight point five feet and twenty seven point five feet. And section five point two point five to increase lot coverage from fifteen percent currently seventeen point eight percent proposing twenty one percent permission to construct a front and rear two story addition premises R three zone are the Lynch's on this.
I'm here.
See you. Go ahead.
Um, Peter Lynch, uh, we own the property at eighty six Lockwood Road. Our house was constructed in nineteen forty and it predates today's zoning laws. Uh, the lot is undersized for our three residential zone. And the addition that we're doing will not deviate from the look of the neighborhood. We're going to continue the same line of the house from looking from the front. I have also gotten signature sign offs from all the joining neighbors. And have a submitted a copy of that with our application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynch. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Lynch? Okay, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against? The this application which is eighty six Lockwood Road.
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Lynch, we're going to be closing the hearing on eighty sixty six Lockwood Road. And we'll be taking this up later when we vote, discuss and vote each matter. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Number seven. Four sixty four Riverside Drive map one three zero parcel one two six petition of Michael DeRosa for a variance of the zoning regulations section five point two point four. To reduce the street line setback from thirty feet currently twenty point one feet proposing twenty point one feet and section five point two point five to increase lot coverage and total floor area from twenty percent and forty percent currently twenty two point five percent and twenty three point seven percent proposing twenty eight point two percent and forty one point eight percent permission to construct the second floor and two story addition with stairs and landing premises A zone. I think Mr. Chase is presenting this.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Okay, hello, thanks for hearing your application, Gary Chase. I'm with Christian Ray Studio. Um, we're presenting an application for for Michael DeRosa. Um, Mike lived there for almost four years now and is looking to uh get a little bit of additional living space in the home. So he's hired us to design an addition on the back of the house. Um, roughly twenty seven by eighteen as he mentioned. Um, that will consist of a kitchen living space on the first floor and a master addition above that on the second floor. Um, he will also be lifting the house to make it FEMA compliant. Um, the house will be lifted about five feet to do so. Uh, in order to achieve this, uh, the two variances that will be required, uh, the front step back. Um, this is partly to legitimize what's there. Uh, currently, uh, the house sits at twenty, about twenty feet, um, with the thirty feet being required. We're keeping that front house, front face of the house as is. Obviously, it's just getting lifted up. Um, so really, that's just being legitimized. Uh, however, as a result of the raise, we are um adding some additional steps. Um, and those steps will come to about seven feet off the front property line. Um, those will not be counting against our coverage as a result of the raise. Um, in addition to that is lot coverage and floor area. Um, the house as it sits is up is already over the allowable at twenty two point five percent. Uh, with our proposed work, um, we're looking at twenty eight point two percent. Uh, floor area um will be increased and will be slightly over the allowable at forty one point eight percent. Um, our hardship is mainly the the loss of usable lot area due to the title wetlands in the back. Um, the gross lot size is a little over eleven thousand square feet. Um, but when you net it out, we're at about forty seven hundred square feet, um, even well below the minimum required um lot area at ninety three seventy five. Um, now, if we were to just for argument's sake, consider the ninety three seventy five as minimum um allowed lot area, what we're proposing here would be as of right would be within our within our limits. Um, our coverage in that scenario uh would be about fourteen and a half percent and our floor area um would be at about twenty one percent. So well below the allowable. Um, beyond that, to be the in terms of the design of the home, we're not asking for anything beyond that. The building height um is as of right, the house is based, the roof of the house is basically just going to be extended backwards. Um, so we're not expanding the height at all. And all the new addition areas will um conform to required setbacks. Um, and we're basically building over top of an existing deck in the rear of the home for so for all intents and purposes, what's already disturbed, we'll be building on top of that. So we won't be disturbing any area further back towards the marsh. Um, and the design of the house, it'll be getting some new sidings and new windows will all be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Um, and obviously, as I mentioned before, raising the house, it'll be FEMA compliant, um, you know, which is for the benefit of everyone. Um, you guys should have also received uh the neighbor petition. We've received support from the neighbors on either side of us, um, as well as one across the street. There's only one uh immediate neighbor that we weren't able to um get a signature from, but we tried multiple times. Uh, and this includes my presentation.
Hey, Mr. Chase, uh, does anyone have any questions, Mr. Chase? Does anyone have questions? Does there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or opposed to this application which is four sixty four Riverside Drive?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, very good. We're going to close the hearing on four sixty four Riverside Drive. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. DeRosa.
Thank you.
And we'll be picking that back up when we're voting. Is we have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe Peter Stern is available if he can hear us.
Can you hear me, guys? Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear us? It's more important.
I can hear you, Matt.
Very good. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear the chairman, Kevin Coy? Mr. Mr. Stern, can you hear Kevin Coy? That's me. I'm talking right now.
He was just there. Oh, so close.
Matt, he looked like he just dropped off. He was on the, he was on the line. I don't know what happened.
Well, um, Mr. Chairman, would you like to try something uh different and I could try to call him and he can speak into my microphone?
Uh, yeah, we could try that if it works.
Let's take a quick hander at that.
It looks like he's back, Matt, if you want.
Okay, great.
Pete Stern, can you, can you speak loud?
Can you hear me? Can anybody hear me now? Hello? Matt, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Mr. Stern.
I can hear you.
Great.
Yes, sir. How are you? Good afternoon.
Mr. Stern, I'm gonna.
Can anybody hear me?
Just wait one second.
Hello?
This is Kevin Coy. I'm the chairman.
Hi, Kevin. I'm on a landline and it's it's coming in and out for whatever reason. Right now, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Um, I'll tell you when to start speaking, but right now officially on recalling seven thirty eight Roland Road, it's petition by Catherine Pelosi and it's for a FEMA compliant elevated rear deck with stairs. I've already made the full call. I don't need to do it again. Mr. Stern, I'm ready to present your application for Ms. Pelosi. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. So looking to construct a twelve by sixteen deck connecting to the first floor. So the preexisting conditions of the lot are nonconforming. Uh, if you look at the the survey, you'll see the the irregular shape of the lot. It's very long and goes to a point at the very end. So with the zoning regs as they are, basically from the back of the house, all the way back to the corner of the yard is all excluded from the coverage calculation, which is extremely limiting for any kind of a structure. So um on top of that, on the E A, the A two, you're going to see a green line. So the Fairfield Conservation Department has a marsh restoration easement uh running right along that tidal creek, which also, you know, takes up part of their yard and kind of limits them even further. So uh both of those things being said, we would.
We just lost him.
Um.
Mr. Stern?
And um basically, the non. Yes, can you hear me?
Be quiet for a second. We lost you when you said both of these things being said, we need, we lost it right there. Pick up from there, please.
All right, so both the the easement running through the yard and the uh the the irregular shape of the lot prohibiting the coverage are are two hardships in my opinion. Uh, and then with the tidal creep running along the easement as well. So we did visit conservation on this and there if we, the deck is designed as now to miss their easement. So they are, we got their blessing. We just have to go through the normal title uh wetlands uh permit process, but there, we're good with that. We have all four neighbors uh surrounding neighbors' signatures. Um, you know, this would just give these guys a chance to enjoy their their backyard because right now it's it's very, very limited. And, you know, it could be up on the first floor connection and maybe enjoy the view of the marsh a little bit and, you know, get a little enjoyment out of the backyard. Um, just FYI, when this is, the ads built survey is completed, it only changes the coverage by one percent. It's actually a little less than one percent due to the irregular irregular lot shape. So. Did you get all that?
Yes, we did. Uh, yes, you did. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stern. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Stern? Yes, Brian?
It's up for me, but I do have a question about. Use the backyard.
So a tenant? No, because this this backs up to their kitchen. So I mean, this is right now, they can, the only way they can enjoy their backyard is to sit at the kitchen and look out the window and go down fifteen steps down to the grass. So um this will be a connection off of their existing kitchen and just a way to enjoy the backyard. I mean, the the, you know, the way it's set up, it's very small and unusable. So um it's not encroaching on the wetlands or anything else, but uh there's certainly no opportunity for any kind of a apartment or I don't know, a tenant. Is that what you're saying? I I don't see that at all. No, it's just, it's just a twelve by sixteen open deck.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yep, yep. Nothing to do with any kind of tenants, just um looking to enjoy the view a little bit.
All right.
And extend their backyard living.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions. Uh, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application seven thirty eight Roland Road?
I don't see anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, no further comments. I'm closing the hearing on seven thirty eight Roland Road. Thank you very much, Mr. Stern. Glad we could finally connect.
Thank you too. Have a great day. Appreciate it.
Next item to pick that up is number eight, and that is fifty three Baldwin Terrace map one three nine parcel two two petition of Justin and Elizabeth Abreu for a variance of the zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the street line, rear set the line sideline and sum of two sideline setbacks from thirty feet, thirty feet, seven feet and twenty five feet currently twenty six point one feet, one point six feet, three point four feet and twenty five point eight feet proposing twenty six point one feet, zero point one feet, one point five feet and twenty point three feet and section five point two point five to increase lot coverage and total floor area from twenty percent and forty percent currently thirty two point two percent and twenty four point seven percent proposing twenty eight point one percent and seventy four percent. Permission to elevate an existing structure to be FEMA compliant and construct a second floor with attic addition premises A zone. The applicants, are they on? Oh, there you go. Okay, very good. Go ahead, sir. We can't hear you. Still cannot hear you.
Hello? Hello?
I hear uh a call in. User is that?
That's, that's me calling.
All right. Okay. All right, go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay, sorry, sorry. I had on the headphone. Um, hi, everybody. My name is Justin Arborn and together with my wife Lizzie, we are the owners of fifty three Baldwin Terrace. Uh, I just want to say thank you to the board for considering our zoning application. Um, simply put, our our home is currently situated on a nonconforming and non FEMA compliant lot. We're seeking a variance to build a twenty three hundred and twenty four square foot FEMA compliant single family home to give myself, my wife and our two daughters the living space, the additional living space that we need. Um, if approved, the existing home would be raised to comply with FEMA as I mentioned, and we would be adding a second floor and a in a finished attic addition um above that. And for perspective, uh, if if our lot was a conforming lot, the the total floor area um of what we are seeking to do would be twenty three point six percent. So well, well within the the allowable range. That's all I got.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir. Uh, does the board have any questions? Yes, Jane, I'm mute.
Hi, I'm I'm confused because there are F A R on the site plan says seventy four percent is what's proposed. Is that correct?
Sorry, say that again?
Your site plan refers to your um, your your F A R, your as seventy four percent, but your description says forty seven percent. So which?
Well.
What was wrong?
So the seventy, the seventy four percent is actually a testament to the size of the lot. If the lot was even a fifty percent conforming lot, then our request would only have been for for a seven percent variance. But since the lot is so small, the the seventy four percent, that is, that is correct.
Okay, because your written description that you wrote says forty seven percent. So that's why it's very confusing.
So uh, so it says even at fifty percent of a conforming lot, we would only do action for seven percent variance as the total floor area would calculate forty seven percent. So the four seven percent.
That's a hypothetical. Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so forget that.
The size of the, the size of the lot.
Okay, so you're asking, you are asking for an F A R of seventy four percent.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Okay, having no further questions. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, which is fifty three Baldwin Terrace?
Kevin?
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. I just had a question.
Okay.
Um, I'm just wanting to clarify. So it looks like lot coverage is going down by four percent. Is that right?
Um, that. I am going to, Bill, are you, are you able to unmute? I'm going to defer to to the architect here who knows these numbers far better than I do. Bill? Sorry, guys.
Okay, they're removing a shed.
Oh, that's why, okay.
Yeah, so I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I guess I didn't understand. Yes, we're removing the shed and I believe we're also moving, removing the front deck. Um, so it it may, that may, that does sound right.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, um, any other questions? Okay, now double check. Anyone in favor or opposition to fifty three Baldwin Terrace?
I don't see or hear anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, sir, not hearing anything. I'm closing the hearing on fifty three Baldwin Terrace. We'll be taking that up later during uh this meeting. Thank you, sir. Number nine, uh thirteen thirty seven Fairfield Beach Road map one eight four parcel nine two petition of Daniel Goldberg for a variance of zoning regulations section eleven point one two to reduce the setback from Long Island Sound from fifty one feet proposing forty eight feet and section eleven point eleven point two to reduce the sideline setback from five feet currently one point seven feet proposing one point seven feet permission to construct an open front porch and rear second floor balcony deck premises B D zone. Is there? Goldberg or this agent? Oh, there you go. Go ahead, sir.
Hi there, I'm Dan Goldberg. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Um, uh, yes, I'm applying for a, uh, I reside at thirteen thirty Fairfield Beach Road. It's a legal nonconforming dwelling. It's over a hundred years. The house is positioned on the lot such that it's pushed all the way to the side of the lot and it's less than two feet from the side property line. Um, I'm applying for variance as parts. Firstly, I'd like to put a front porch on the house that would architecturally uh jibe with what's there would be, that's quite the aesthetic of the house at present. And I would just like the front porch to be able to reach the width of the house. So I would need to um, uh, I seek a variance to go beyond the five side lock uh constriction up to one seven, whatever the house is currently at, just so the front porch can match up aesthetically to where the side of the house is. That's part one. And secondly, I seek to put a balcony, a second floor balcony elevator or cantilever off the back of the house that would move the sixth part of the structure a bit closer toward toward Long Island Sound, only five feet as width or depth of the balcony. Um, in order to make up any, I should note that it's only, that balcony is only potentially visible from one neighbor's east side. And to my application, I've penned a letter from that east neighbor with whom I reviewed the plans. Uh, he can only, he would only physically see one quarter of the balcony. Has no objection to me constructing that balcony. Uh, the neighbor on the other side sits closer to the sound and there's also a large privet so there's no way he would have any view of the balcony I'm adding. Uh, there would be some extra square footage required that I'm prepared to pull up some um impenetrable stone deck in the back. So if you look at the application, I'm looking to cover no additional square footage. I just want a variance for the balcony and for the front porch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Uh, does the board have questions for Mr. Goldberg? Hearing no questions. Uh, like to find out if there's anyone that has an opposition or would like to speak in favor of this application thirteen thirty seven Fairfield Beach Road.
I have not seen anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We're going to close the hearing on, I'm closing the hearing on thirteen thirty seven Fairfield Beach Road. Mr. Goldberg, thank you. We'll be taking that up at the end of this meeting. Next opposition, uh, next matter, so next matter, uh, number ten seventy six Orchard Hill Drive map one four seven parcel three eight petition of Cynthia Seiright for a variance of zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the sideline setback from seven feet currently nine point four feet proposing four point five feet permission to construct a one story addition premises A zone. And I know that uh, just for the board, just to make sure we have that, there was an opposition email uh that was sent in. And uh, we did have some emails for people that were also supporting that, which are part of the, part of the record as well, since they were sent into the town timely and before this hearing. Uh, so now, uh, Seiright, are you presenting? Go ahead.
We are. Hi, um, Cynthia, I'm Richard Seiright, seventy six Orchard Hill Drive. Um, we are seeking a variance to the side setback. Um, we have a nineteen forty seven Cape that has a very cute but tiny garage, only ten feet wide. So we want to be able to um make our garage wider and then build a first floor bedroom behind that. Um, so it would be removing the existing garage and adding uh the new, the new wider garage with the addition for the bedroom behind it that attaches to the existing home. Um, we are not, we're not seeking a a lot coverage variance, just a reduction in that side setback on the right hand side. Uh, and our our primary hardship is that when the house was built uh and set on its lot in nineteen forty seven, they positioned it very far to the right hand side, leaving us, you know, like nine feet four inches on the right and twenty three, I think, feet on the other side. So it's, um, you know, that's just the way they built the house back then. And um, that's, that's our main hardship. Um, I know there, there's a a lot of support in the neighborhood because we're going to, obviously, when we do that, make, refresh the whole house, the siding, the windows. Um, and it, you know, it needs it, um, kind of bring it up to speed with the rest of the homes in the neighborhood. And um, the, I did submit pictures that show the existing conditions um between my house and the house, our house and the the house that uh is, you know, has written the letter of opposition. And you can, you have, if you have it, it looks like this. So we have a shrubbery between the two properties where we're requesting that setback. Variants.
All right. Thank you, Miss Seiright. As the board have, and uh, let me, I know that there was uh an opposition email from Mr. Burns. Let's just wait and see if uh, if if he speaks on this call. And if he does, I will, obviously, I'll afford you an opportunity to address that. But if you're gonna, you don't have to address it right now. Also give you another opportunity to address his comments regardless of whether he speaks as you wish to. Okay, rather just before you address it, I'd rather find out if he's going to speak. That way we kill, kill two birds with one stone.
Okay, sure.
And uh, so let me first see uh if we have any questions for you from the board. Any questions? There's shakes and nods of all none. Now, I'll open this up to anyone who wishes to speak in favor. And we do have a lot of the emails submitted into our office, uh, the town's office. So those are part of your record as well, supporting the application. But is is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application seventy six Orchard Hill Drive?
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is William Burns. I'm the direct neighbor who submitted a request not to approve this variance.
Yes, sir, I have.
I would like to.
Burns, what do you want to tell us?
I don't know if you.
We did.
Well. Basically, they're building a, Seirites are asking for a two and a half variance from the normal seven foot offset on the left hand side of my property to build an addition. This would leave a space of approximately four and a half feet from my property line. The addition is approximately fifty feet in length, twenty feet in height and fifteen wide, running parallel to. running parallel to my property line north and south lengthwise. This would be a rather imposing structure, sitting four-and-a-half feet from my property line, and have massive visual impact. Since the main house of the Cape-style first floor is four feet above grade, this would require the foundation to be four feet above grade before the bedroom can be constructed. This eave of the roof would be 13-and-a-half feet above ground level. The peak of the 45-degree roof would add another seven-and-a-half feet to the eave for a total height of approximately 20 feet. This is hardly a modest construction, but somewhat large and overwhelming. Currently, the Seawright's building, one-car-attached garage, is 9.25 feet from my property line and has open down spots and with one-to-two-foot extensions running on top of the ground, pointing to my property line.
Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, this is the chairman.
Hello?
This is the chairman speaking.
Um, yes.
To me, you're just reading what you've already sent us in an email.
Yes.
I mean, you don't have to read that into the record. Your email is part of this record, and the board received it in-
I didn't, I wasn't on that.
Yeah, I, I said-
There is one correct.
Is, is there something you want to add to, to that?
Uh, no, I could, if, if you're going to consider that, that, then I don't have to, uh-
Oh, yeah, if you want to add something, it's a well-written, written, uh, letter. You hit all your, you hit a lot of points in that letter. But if you wanted to add or add something, that, now I'm giving you the opportunity.
Okay, there is one little correction in the second paragraph. I wanted to make sure the, the roof, although it slopes east and west, it runs north and south. So it's, it's directly in parallel to my, uh, uh, my yard. I, if everything is, I don't really have to add to it if you're going to be reading that and considering all my, uh, points.
Yes, yeah, we've, I've read it on the chairman. I'm sure the other board members have read it. Uh, and, you know, and, and that's what's good, to submit it early, so we're allowed to digest it. Um, unless you have something addition, in addition to that, uh-
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, though, I appreciate it. Um, is there anyone else?
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in opposition or in favor? 76 Orchard Hill Drive. Okay, hearing nothing further. Uh, this is Seawright, you're entitled to address, uh, Mr. Burns's comments on the line now, as well as the comment that was, uh, part of the, uh, record that he submitted.
Uh, okay, um, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, in terms of, um, Mr. Burns's drainage concerns, uh, all leaders will be connected to underground water retention, the CULTX, which is required and monitored by the engineering department. So drainage will not be a concern. Um, in terms of the characterization of, this is a massive structure that would be imposing, um, I mean, it's a Cape Cod house and replacing the existing garage. I, I submitted, you know, obviously, the architectural drawings and, and the committee members can, um, view those. But the structure is very much in keeping within, you know, the neighborhood in 1947. It's probably the smallest house in the neighborhood in that regard. Um, if a builder were to buy this property and build the structure, obviously, they could go, you know, two-and-a-half feet high and build a 4,900-something square foot home. So it will be a modest home. It will remain a modest home. It will be, you know, um, all total 2,119 square feet, when, if, if we got the variance and were able to do this. Um, uh, there, the comment about the foundation or being, statement of, uh, the foundation being four foot above grade, um, it's, it's actually one feet eight inches of exposed foundation above the grade. Um, I just want to reiterate, we'd be under lot coverage. We're not seeking a lot coverage variance. We're, you know, it's, and we easily meet the sum of the two sides for the setbacks. It's just that the house was built very close to that side. Um, there is, there is visual, uh, shrubbery between the homes, and we would maintain that and make sure that, um, you know, a screening, uh, existed that was attractive between the properties. Um, and in terms of sort of the, um, financial devaluation of Mr. Burns's property, I, um, you know, we don't really understand how that could be when one home is improved, all, all homes in the neighborhood generally benefit. Um, and in terms of negative visual and aesthetic effects, Mr. Burns talked about, um, our addition being something that would be unpleasing from his side angle view. And I did submit some photos of what our side angle view is of his current property's conditions. I submitted those, um, to, uh, address that, uh, point that he had made in his letter. And I think that covers all, you know, his main concerns.
All right, thank you, Ms. Seawright. Uh, does the board have any questions on those comments? Yes, Jane?
Hi, so the, on the photos that were submitted, you state that, um, in the future, any necessary new plantings at the border or fence would be provided.
Yes.
Is that, that is part of your application? That's a condition of your application?
We would be willing to make that a condition of our application. Um, at the moment, there is visual screening, but trees die over time. You know, we would be happy to maintain visual screening between the two properties.
Okay, thank you very much. Sure, thank you.
Okay, all right, um, that closes a hearing on 76 Orchard Hill Drive. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, say one more comment. I, I think you haven't really addressed the, uh, snowfall. And that could be very problematic as far as drainage goes. Her, her roof would slope towards my yard, and it would be with the overhang, it would only be about three feet from my-
Burns, stop talking. Mr. Burns presented your, and we've, we've read your presentation and addressing what, Ms. Seawright's addressing what she feels is, you know, she feels that she needs to address. Um, it's not your place to question whether she properly addressed your comments. That's our place to question that. Okay?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, all right. The hearing's closed on 76 Orchard Hill Drive. Next item is 11. B34 dash, uh, 336 Pine Creek Avenue, map 234 parcel, uh, 243. Petition of John D. and Elizabeth G. O'Connor for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 11.1.1, to increase the minimum number of dwelling units from one, currently two, proposing two. Permission to legitimize an existing apartment premises, BD zone. Attorney Fallon, I think this is for-
It is. Can you hear me and see me okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, good afternoon to members of the board. Uh, for the record, my name's John Fallon. I'm an attorney here in Fairfield, and I am representing John and Elizabeth O'Connor, who, as the call indicates, are the owner of the property at, located at 334, 336 Pine Creek Avenue. And we do, as the chair indicates, seek a variance of section 11.1.1 to legitimize a long-existing, um, apartment that is located on the property and connected to the main dwelling. The historical background, which we get that is, is unique. We did a fair amount of research on this, and as best we can tell, based upon our conversations with neighbors and reviewing other records, for many, many decades, going back into the 30s, in fact, this structure was a multifamily dwelling. Indeed, at one point in time, it had, we're not quite sure, three or four separate dwelling units in it. In 2000, the then-owner of the property, uh, did express an intent to, to convert the multifamily house into a single-family home. And that was partially done. However, the existing apartment that is the subject of this application, uh, remained. And when my clients, the O'Connors, bought the property in 2007, th- this apartment that they now seek to utilize and legitimize existed, as it had for many decades. So all we're looking to do here now, and I'll elaborate on that somewhat in a minute, is to legitimize this existing apartment that has, as I said, existed on the property for many decades. I think the, the request is consistent, as I point out in my material, with the, the nature of the, uh, the neighborhood, uh, down on Pine Creek in this area. I detail, and I'll do it here, 318, 320 Pine Creek is a property that has a detached apartment, uh, as well as a main dwelling. 309 Pine Creek Avenue is a two-family dwelling. 296, 298 Pine Creek Avenue contains a, a, a main dwelling and a detached apartment. Uh, 178, 182 Pine Creek Avenue also has a legal detached apartment. At 56, 58 Pine Creek, there's an existing two-family duplex. And as you know, at the beginning of the street, there's a four-story condominium structure. And across the street from that, at 397 and 387 Pine Creek, there are other multifamily buildings in place. The apartment, as I said, that is the subject of our request, uh, has been maintained as a separate dwelling unit for many decades. In fact, the, the address, it hasn't addressed at 336 Pine Creek Avenue. Uh, it has two separate meters and, uh, for utility purposes. And indeed, separate utility bills are sent, although they're both sent to the O'Connors at this point. So with regard to the statutory analysis, with regard to these facts in section 8-63, you will make, have to make two determinations. Whether what we wish to do is consistent with the comprehensive zoning plan and whether there is legal foundation, uh, based upon our case law, relative to hardship that supports the granting of the variance. Uh, clearly, it's been held that the use, that if a use that is allowed under a variance, uh, in the area is consistent with the historic use of the property and other uses in the neighborhood, then the first part of the test is met. That's the Egan case that I cite in my material. In this case, as I said, we're simply looking not to create a second dwelling, uh, but to legitimize the status of this apartment as it has existed for many decades. Uh, we did submit to you with this application a signed confirmation from the owners of the surrounding properties, 318, 320, 296, 298, 346, 362, 355, 404, 309, and 244 Pine Creek Avenue, uh, that they are aware of this application, and they have no opposition to the granting of the variance that will legally validate this existing apartment. I find one of the things very timely with regard to this request, as I cite in my material, is the ongoing efforts and analysis by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission at the request of the Affordable Housing Committee and the Fairfield Senior Advocacy Committee. Uh, the TPZ presently has in front of it consideration of zoning amendments that will in fact, uh, make, uh, the utilization, the legal utilization of, uh, accessory dwellings such as this, uh, easier. Can you all hear me? Because I'm getting some noise. Okay? But one thing, forgive me, that's fine. The reasons that are included in this, that as I said before, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time are, are designed specifically to encourage the development and utilization of additional accessory apartment dwellings, uh, throughout the town because they do provide a, a proper and an ideal option in terms of housing needs for our ever-changing population in Fairfield. So I think all of that addresses substantially the first part of the test. Uh, with regard to hardship, I cite numerous cases. The one I thought most definitely on point was Horowitz versus the town of Waterford. In Horowitz, as you know, the Supreme Court found that hardship was established in, and, and with regard to a possible unconstitutional taking that would arise if existing regulations were applied, uh, to a lot that had always been maintained as, as a building lot, and to abrogate that use. That decision, I think, is in keeping with the underpinnings of this application and all the cases I cite at page three and four of my material, that the basis here is this, this, this exists. It has existed for many, many decades. Uh, it, it, it has been recognized as such. So to, to, to deal with, uh, not validating this point, it seems to me, would be not only inconsistent with where I think we're trying to head as a matter of policy in town, but would raise as relevant these cases that I cite. I know you did receive an email from Ms. Benel. I have great respect for her and her commitment to the beach area and concerns with regard to flooding. I would simply say, however, that what is important here, and I think, uh, directly implicates her comments, is we are not seeking any new construction. We are not seeking to add any units of housing in, in this application. This dwelling is existing. It's been here, as best we can tell, since the 1930s. It, it already has a separate address. It receives separate utility bills. And we are simply trying to address a legitimization of that. So that whereas concerns with regard to the flood plain and increases in density uh, could be well-founded in another application where one is seeking to create by a new construction, a second dwelling, I don't think that's applicable here. And also, as I've said perhaps redundantly, it's consistent with the efforts of the Affordable Housing Committee and the Senior Advocacy Committee, uh, to increase and encourage these very types of accessory dwelling apartments in conjunction with existing main dwellings. So in summary, uh, we think the granting of the variance is simply going to, uh, legitimize a longstanding use of this property and the residential units, uh, the unit that is contained there. We hope you'll agree that we satisfy the standards of 8-6 in that the granting of the variance isn't going to have any adverse, uh, impact on the comprehensive plan. Indeed, as the zoning regulations are evolving, it seems to be consistent with those considerations. And the hardship does exist based upon the fact that it is here now, and the granting of the variance, uh, would basically eliminate what has been an ongoing use of this particular apartment for many years. Uh, we have neighbor support, as the petition indicates, and, uh, we think it's a good thing. We think you're going to, um, perhaps at some point in the future, see less of these types of applications because the Planning and Zoning Commission may be moving in, in a direction, uh, that will legitimize these types. But at this point, and with that being unknown, we think the, uh, the merits of this case are well-founded. We've done our homework and our due diligence with the neighbors, and we'd like very much to be able to utilize this as a legal accessory apartment, uh, consistent with, uh, the long-term informal use of the property. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have, and as always, appreciate your attention and consideration of the request. I can't hear you, Kevin. Kevin, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I try to cut down on feedback. I'm muting myself. I'm not used to muting myself. Uh, that's my wife. The board have any, thank you, Attorney Fallon. Any questions for Attorney Fallon? Okay, uh, hearing, uh, no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, which is 334 dash 336 Pine Creek Avenue? And for the record, we did receive an email, uh, before this hearing by Ms. Benel, which you addressed, but I still open it up for comments in favor or opposition at this time.
I've not heard anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think, Attorney Fallon, you've already addressed Ms. Benel's comments, so you don't need to address them again.
Thank you very much for your time and patience.
All right, now closing the hearing on 334, 336 Pine Creek Avenue. We'll take that up at the end of our meeting. The next matter that we have is 693 Fairfield Beach Road, map 184 parcel 12. Petition of Declan Marr for variance of the zoning regulations, section 2.8.1, to expand a third floor. Permission to reconstruct the third floor and add a dormer premises, DR, uh, D1 zone. I think you have an applicant, an, an agent presenting that, right, sir?
Uh, my builder is on the phone as well, but I can speak to the nuts and bolts of it.
All right, why don't you, uh, start us off, and the builder needs to chime in. We can certainly, you could certainly invite the builder to chime in, too.
Okay, great. Uh, Declan Marr, 693 Fairfield Beach Road. Uh, the house is, uh, one of seven houses built on a small lot back in the 1980s. So these are seven legal non-conforming residents. Ours is, uh, less than 2,000 square feet are, are most of them. Five out of the seven are the basically same floor plan. They're all about 2,000 square feet. And it's known as Burke Court. The house, my house, was lifted in 2018 as a FEMA loss mitigation grant to stop further problems. Everything was done and has been done to FEMA standards and codes and inspected by FEMA, including lattice work for pass-through floodwaters underneath the house, which was some of my storage area, but now really cannot be. I am looking to, not looking to increase lot coverage or anything like that. All I'm really doing is changing the roof lines so I can have more usable space in the attic. Right now, it's an A-frame. And I want a dormer out toward the, the house or the west side of the house. And there, there's two dog-shaped dormers on the front, which are very narrow, about two and a half feet. Want to make those a little wider. Again, so there's no setback issues on this. Everything is going to be the same in terms of the house. If you do a drive-by to see the line, there's a fence next to the house, but that is not the property line. The property goes farther past the fence because the fence is not, is more on the level part of the property than on the crooked part of the property. So it just looks closer than it is on the west side. And, you know, I lost some storage underneath the house from the FEMA specs that I had to do. All the neighbors, I think you have a copy, in Burke Court have signed off and supported this, except for one who lives in Canada. I couldn't get a hold of him because he's an older gentleman. And I also got the neighbors who are not in Burke Court to sign off on it as well to the west side and to the east side. So they've all signed a letter of support on this. So, you know, not, not looking for a lot, just more usable space in the top rather than crawl space. There'll be no change to the height of the building.
All right, thank you, sir. Do, do you, do you need for your...
In case you, in case I miss something, just see if he has a question or something to say.
Is that Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond, do you have something to add to that to assist Mr. Marr? Or did he cover everything?
I think he did an excellent job of covering everything.
Okay, all right. Good. Now, does the board have any questions for Mr. Marr or Mr. Raymond? Yes, Jane.
Can you explain why on the survey, there's nothing indicated for FAR? And you're, you are expanding the volume of the third floor, correct?
David, you want to answer that one in terms of expanding the volume? It's, it's like a huge dormer. I can't walk at the very edges of it.
Yeah, there won't be any additional living space of, you know, legal headroom space. You know, so the, the height of the ridge is, you know, the underside of the ridge is just around seven feet. So the actual living space, legal living space, is not getting increased.
And that's why you just have NA?
Right.
Okay, thank you. That explains it. Thanks.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Marr or Mr. Raymond on this application? Okay. Hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to 693 Fairfield Beach Road?
I've not seen anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Thank you. I'm now going to close the hearing on 693 Fairfield Beach Road. Thank you, Mr. Marr. Thank you, Mr. Raymond, for speaking up and answering the questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item that we have is number 13, 290 Tunxus Hill Road, map 40, parcel 328, petition of 290 Tunxus Hill LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 29.10.1, to increase the permitted square feet and height of a wall sign from 72 square feet and three feet high, proposing 75 square feet and four feet high. Permission to erect a new wall sign premises, DCD Zone. Attorney Fitzpatrick, I know you have this, and then there's also the same property, but for a different sign. Is your presentation going to overlap or should I be calling them separate? It seems from the materials, there's going to be some overlap. Obviously, we take them up and vote separately, but there seems to be some overlap.
Mr. Chairman, can you see me in less important and hear me as well?
Yes.
I would prefer to have them separately, simply because I think we need a separate record in the event there would be an appeal by any party.
Okay, fine, then I'll, then you can start out on number 13. I'd, we'd be taking them up, voting separately, obviously, but...
Thank you.
But we'll, we'll do it, we can do it that way, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Bill Fitzpatrick, an attorney in Fairfield with a law firm of Fitzpatrick, Prey and Bologna. Our office is at 1735 Post Road. I'm here this afternoon representing 290 Tunxus Hill LLC, the principal of which is Michael Berkowitz, the owner of a commercial building which formerly housed the Coles Retail Store. This property is bordered on the north by Greenfield Street, on the east by Villa Avenue, on the south by Tunxus Hill Road. The parcel contains 6.85 acres located in the Design Commercial District. The present retail building on the site contains approximately 100,000 square feet. The entirety of this building was occupied by Coles, a big-box retailer, retailer, which occupied the premises for approximately the last 20 years. Coles closed its doors permanently on October 17 of this year, undoubtedly the result of the current brick-and-mortar retail environment together with the pandemic. The applicant has been fortunate enough to lease the property to two quality retailers, Aldi and Florin Decor. Aldi will occupy approximately 20% of the building and Florin Decor, the rest. This application pertains to the proposed signage for Aldi, specifically the application before the Board of Decredity Variance of section 29.10.1 of the regulations to permit an increase in the permitted square footage for a wall sign from 72 square feet to 75 square feet and to permit an increase in the permitted height from 36 inches to 42 inches in connection with the primary sign for a new retail tenant. Please note, there's a typo in the application I prepared, which states the proposed increase for the figure height is from 36 inches to 48 inches. It is not, as the plan accompanying the application depicts, the request is to increase the height for a figure from 36 inches to 42 inches. Since the actual request is less than the request set forth in the legal notice, I don't believe there's any legal impediment to hearing the application today. The test for the granting of a variance is set forth in the Smith case, Smith v. ZBAA, 174 Connecticut, 326, a 1978 case, which states, regarding hardship under General Statute, section 8-6, parents 3 and parents, a local zoning board may grant a variance if two basic conditions are met. One, the variance is shown not to affect substantially the comprehensive zoning plan. And two, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan. First part of the test, no substantial effect on the comprehensive zoning plan is satisfied here where the proposed use, a sign in connection with a retail tenant, certainly a permitted use in the DCD. Second part of the test, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the purpose of the zoning plan is satisfied here. I would submit by several factors. First, the front of this building is located over 450 feet from Villa Avenue, at the property entrance on Villa Avenue. Given this considerable distance, the ability to recognize the Aldi signage is important for both the retailer and the consumer. The proposed signage is Aldi's primary signage prototype. The variance is requested by the applicant are minimal, an increase of three square feet in the signed square footage, and an increase of six inches in the height of the Aldi logo. I think these minimal requests make sense, given the size of this storefront and given its location, a considerable distance from the primary entrance to the property. I would submit that the purpose and intent of the signage regulation is being served in that the proposed signage identifies the retailer for potential customers while not being out of scale with the storefront. Aldi will retrofit this existing space into a limited assortment grocery store. A new facade, thrills, and utilities are proposed to this space. Aldi's stores are smaller, five to six aisles, and this produces efficiencies that reduce the cost, which in turn they pass on to their customers. This location will be Aldi's 27th store in Connecticut, but only its second store in Fairfield County. The last point I'd like to make, given the difficulty that brick-and-mortar retailers are facing in general and given the factor in the midst of a COVID-19 pandemic, is that the town is very fortunate to have the opportunity to replace a big-box department store retailer with two smaller retail tenants with a proven record of success. Given the minimal nature of the variance is requested, the fact that the proposed signage represents the Aldi's standard corporate prototype, I think under the circumstances, it makes sense to approve this application. And I ask the board to do so. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Does anybody have any questions on number 13 for the Aldi side? Any questions? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to number 13, 290 Tunxus Hill Road? And that's for the Aldi space side.
I don't see anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to close, number 13, 290 Tunxus Hill Road. And to, just so we can make it clear that they're separate, that is for the Aldi side. Next item is number 14, 290 Tunxus Hill Road, map 40, parcel 328, petition of 290 Tunxus Hill LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 29.10.1, to increase the square footage and sign height from 72 square feet and three feet, proposing 258.22 square feet and four feet. And the number of wall signs from one, proposing four. Permission to erect four new wall signs, premises, DCD Zone. Attorney Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with a law firm of Fitzpatrick, Prey and Bologna. We're at 1735 Post Road. I should note that some of this presentation may be redundant in the sense that some of these same factors apply to the application for the Aldi grocery store that I just completed. However, in the eyes of the law, if you will, these are separate applications that require separate presentations. So please excuse any repetition because I think I just simply have to do so. I'm here this afternoon representing 290 Tunxus Hill Road LLC, owner of a commercial building which formerly housed the Coles Retail Store. Property is bordered on the north by Greenfield Street, east by Villa Ave, south by Tunxus Hill Road. It contains 6.85 acres. It's locate, located in the Design Commercial District. Present retail building contains approximately 100,000 square feet. This application pertains to the proposed signage for the second of the two retail tenants to be located at 290 Tunxus Hill, specifically Florin Decor. Florin Decor will occupy approximately 80% of the building. The specific variance application pertaining to Florin Decor requests a variance of section 29.10.1 of the zoning regulations to permit an increase in the permitted square footage for a wall sign from 72 square feet to 258.22 square feet, to permit an increase in the permitted figure height from 36 inches to 48 inches, and to permit an increase in the number of wall signs on one wall, from one sign to four signs as part of the Florin Decor signage package. As you've heard from me in the past, the test for the granting of a variance is set forth in the Archibald v. Wadlow case, 25 Connecticut appellate, 375, a 1991 case, which states, regarding hardship under General Statute, section 8-6, parents 3 and parents, the local zoning board may grant a variance if two basic conditions are met. One, the variance is shown not to affect substantially the comprehensive zoning plan. And two, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulation is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan. First prong of the test, no substantial effect on the comprehensive zoning plan is satisfied here where the proposed use, signage associated with a retail tenant is certainly a permitted use in the Design Commercial District. The second part of the test, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the purpose of the zoning plan is satisfied here. I would submit by several factors. First, it's important to note the Florin Decor storefront is approximately 75% of the building frontage, or 300 feet. And the front of this building is located over 450 feet from the Villa Avenue exits to the shopping center. The first variance request relates to the size of the primary wall sign. It's, what's requested is an increase from 72 square feet to approximately 260 square feet. This signage is the prototypical corporate brand for Florin Decor. Florin Decor is new to the town of Fairfield. For that matter, Florin Decor is new to the state of Connecticut. There is a Florin Decor store presently under construction in Danbury, but that store and this will make two in the state of Connecticut. Therefore, the ability to see and recognize the Florin Decor primary signage is valuable for both the customer and the retailer. The second variance request relates to the proposed increase in the height of the Florin Decor ampersands. The variance request is to increase the height from 36 inches to 48 inches. Again, the height of this figure, which is an integral part of the Florin Decor name, is not oversized in the context of the front wall facing Villa Avenue, when I would submit as rather a fair and reasonable request, given the size of the Florin Decor storefront and the distance from the property entrance on Villa Avenue. The final variance request before the board relates to the proposed increase in the number of wall signs on one wall from one sign to four signs. Again, I repeat, Florin Decor is new to the town of Fairfield and for that matter, new to the state of Connecticut. As such, the specific products offered by Florin Decor are unknown to the general public. The three additional proposed signs let potential customers know that stone, tile, and wood are among the primary Florin Decor products offered. Florin Decor is a hard-surface flooring store with a significant selection of wood and tile flooring. They have pro customers that they call them, typically installers, who make up 60% of the customer base. They are given a dedicated sales manager. Florin Decor also offers free design services typically used by non-pro customers to assist in making product selections. While new to Connecticut, Florin Decor has 100 stores in 35 metro markets. Stores average about 80,000 square feet, as is the case here. And each Florin Decor typically stocks over 1 million square feet of flooring product. By way of comparison, the Super Stop &amp; Shop at 1160 Kings Island Cut Off, which encompasses approximately 70,000 square feet, again, the Florin Decor store here is 80,000 square feet. That store received a variance approval for an increase in the maximum wall sign coverage from 72 square feet to 364 square feet. Florin Decor is revoked in 260 square feet. They also received an increase, adherence for an increase in the number of wall signs on one wall from one sign to 12 signs. There are four wall signs requested here. And lastly, that application received approval for an increase in figure height for one wall sign from three feet to four feet, the same as being requested here. I recognize that the approval of a signed variance for another retailer is not a legal precedent. But I do think it's indicative of at least that board's recognition of the fact that an extremely large retailer, as is the case here, warrants a variance of the signage regulations. Again, the Super Stop &amp; Shop approval for a marginally smaller store for a larger primary sign and more wall signs. sign and more wall signs. I think the request before you is fairly reasonable. I submit that the purpose and intent of the signage regulations are being served in that the proposed signage identifies the retailer and its products for potential customers while not being out of scale for the storefront. The flooring decor storefront contains approximately 8,000 square feet. A single 72-square-foot sign would simply be lost on that storefront. The limitation of a single 72-square-foot wall sign makes sense on a 360-square-foot storefront. The regulation states the math, or states you can have 72 square feet or 20% of the tenant wall area, whichever is less. So 20% of a 360-square-foot storefront is 72 square feet. That limitation makes good sense for that size storefront. It probably makes good sense for a storefront two or three times that large, perhaps 3,000 square foot storefront. But the storefront here is approximately 8,000 square feet. A larger primary sign and an increased number of wall signs, I submit, are appropriate. I recognize, because I have been in front of this board in the past a few times, that signage applications are sometimes not well-received by the board. I think under these circumstances, the requests that are being made here, given the size of this store, given the location of this store, warrant approval of these requests. I'm asking the board to provide the very elasticity in the zoning regulations that the zoning board of appeals is designed to provide. The legal hardship, in part, is the failure of the zoning regulations to recognize the size and location of the different storefronts that this regulation is applicable to. The last point I'd like to make is that, given the difficulty that brick and mortar retailers are facing, given the fact that we're in the midst of a COVID-19 pandemic, again, I think the town of Fairfield is very fortunate to have the opportunity to replace a big box department store retailer with two smaller retail tenants with a proven record of success. The town plan and zoning commission, in approving the zone compliance application for these two retailers, made note that it's great that we have replacements for a large retailer, and the fact that we don't have any extended vacancy is simply fantastic. For the reasons I have outlined, I request the application be approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Jane, please.
Hi. I'm a little bit, I'm confused again. So you're asking for four signs, but there's a fifth sign around the corner that doesn't...
Yeah, that fifth, that fifth sign is, the four sign limitation is on one wall. That sign being around the corner is legit.
Okay, and then my other question, these are illuminated signs. Are they going to be on 24 hours a day?
Oh, yeah, I don't think, I can't believe that would be the fact. Usually they have the present materials are such that you can see it during the day, and then it's illuminated at night.
So yes, it's going to be on all night long?
I don't think it would make any sense. I don't know the answer to that. I do have Mr. McKay, you can see Scott McKay is on the list here. He is the, oh, no, I'm sorry, Scott McKay is on Aldi. Mike Cohen is the signage guy on flooring decor. If you unmute Mike Cohen, perhaps he can answer that question.
I can't do that. Can Matt do that?
Can Emmeline?
That's Matt's. Question?
Mr. To be able to speak.
Mr. Cohen?
I'm here, can you hear, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, did you hear the question? This is Chairman Cohen.
I did.
Okay, can you answer?
Yes, sir. Yeah, most times, and it's up to the client, and you guys, as the city, could regulate this, but most times those signs are on timers, so that we can set them to turn off and turn on at certain times. They're not on during the day and they're on at night, so, yes, they are on at night, but we can put them on timers.
So what are the hours of the store opening?
That I cannot answer, I'm just a lowly sign vendor.
Hi, I'm Sarah McGowan. I'm under shot for flooring decor. I am somewhat new, so I have actually texted my boss to find out about how long the lights are on, but the store hours typically open, I'll look real quick, I think 10:00 PM is normally the time that we turn off.
10:00 PM?
Yes, because I think right now we're on COVID hours, so the one I've searched that I know is near me is 7:00 AM to, is it 7:00 PM? Let me look, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for that. Let me look one that I know, the closest one to y'all. Here, sorry, I apologize. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, not 10:00 PM, so it's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We have people at our store all hours as far as I assume 10:00 PM, I'm pre-stalking. But I also want to point that we know there's houses behind the store, but these signs will be facing away from them. So we have any shining illuminated signs in their windows.
So then will the signs be illuminated only when the store is open? Is that what you said?
No, no, I, the signs will see through when it's dark outside, like at night, but the store hours are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
So the lights will be on all night?
Yes, but if you, we can, as Mike mentioned, we can get timed lights, if that is a condition.
Are you offering that as a condition?
I'm going to go to...
I can't, I don't think I can give you conditions, I think you have to offer conditions to us.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry, this is...
Is that, I think, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
They could offer a condition, but Ms. McGowan may not be able to offer that condition.
Right, that's like, it's like, it might be, yes, thank you, that is exactly...
Okay, understood.
All right, any, any other questions, board? Okay, hearing no further questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to number 14, 290 Tuxus Hill Road, and these relate to floor and decor store signs?
I don't see anybody coming on, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all right, I'll close the hearing on number 14, 290 Tuxus Hill Road. Attorney Fitzpatrick, Ms. McGowan, and Mr. Cohen, I think, still...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hang on that.
Thank you.
I'm going to recall, it's from our continued docket, the 160 Pine Creek, 160 Pine Creek Mr. Decker, have you seen or heard from them at all?
I have not.
Okay, I think they're at their limits, so we're just going to let it, let it go, and we'll have to submit a new application.
Yeah, I will reach out to them once again, but at this point, you know, I'm not sure what happened to them.
Yep, I will officially say that it is continued, but that doesn't mean it's extending the time period for voting if, I do have some orders from the governor, which may extend that, but we'll have to look into that, but for now, it is considered continued, and that's continued docket number 7, 160 Pine Creek Avenue.
I'll follow up that timeline tomorrow.
Let them know, maybe, maybe there's something in some of these orders that will help, help on that, at least. That concludes the public hearing. Does the board need a quick break? We've been almost two hours. Yes, yes, let's take 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene at that time to be voting on these. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, so now I'm on a quick break. What's happened? You're still there, you said? Yeah, wow, what happened? Okay. Oh, you know what, and you know what, my, I guess I could do one of those. I might even have the garage door, I install the door and not the opener, and just make it look like it's a manual garage, no power, no nothing, no nothing, and then we'll let him go in there and go right after the seal. That's what I'm thinking. All right, and I'm glad he figured it out, you know, that could have been a key to someone's own, so that's great. Oh, well, good then, I'm glad he found it. All right, very cool. All right, Jill.
I tell you, in, in January, I'd have to bring a spare heater for my office. When I close the door, my office is freezing.
I put my jacket on.
If you can tell, I have windows that are on two sides of my office, weird shape, just ice, ice cold.
Hey, at least you have lights. What's that? At least you have lights, I'm working on a cell phone light.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's... Say it again?
Kevin, can you guys hear me at all?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I was laughing at Terry was having a conversation with somebody and not muted.
I heard him.
Yeah, you just got to make sure we don't say or do something that gets the town in trouble.
You mean like putting, you mean like putting a five-month-old in the middle of a hearing?
Well, you were feeding a five-month-old, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're making everybody hungry.
Yeah. My wife's on one deadline, I'm on the hearing, the two-and-a-half-year-old's just stuck in the middle, he doesn't know what to do.
So Matt? Other than the not unmuting myself, was my voice chopping up like it did the last hearing, or?
No, there was, there was one time that you were breaking up, but that was more at the beginning of the meeting. After that, I think we were pretty clear, there was just a couple of applicants that had what seemed to be some feedback, specifically Attorney Fallon and Fitzpatrick, and, and I think, Mr. Chase had a little bit of back, background or feedback, what have you, but that was it, that was about it.
That was the same as, that was the same as the last one, and when you muted in the last one, it alleviated that problem.
Yeah, I think sometimes if you do that, that might work.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm picking the sound from one, and it's going into my speaker.
Oh, right, yep.
Yep. Yes, single audio sources are almost always best, one input, one output.
Okay, are we ready to start? All right, reconvene our working session, December 3, 2020. Matters that we had on the continued docket, number 7, 160 Pine Creek Avenue, that's been continued to January, on number 11, on the continued docket, 30 Daybreak Road, that has also been continued to January. First matter we have some business on is number 1 on the general docket, 59 Craig Court. Mr. Heinz presented this application, Ms. Bruno, it's to extend an existing rear elevated deck. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
10 seconds.
Discussion?
Seemed reasonable to me. The look of it was nice, just making it flush with the edges of the house.
Yeah, and if you look at the back, you have, you know, less than half required, so a reasonable request, all right? Bring it to a vote. Okay, I'm going to go, don't move on my screen, because I'm following the same order. Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And yes, for me, that passes. 5 Beacon View Drive, petition of Ms. Martin, it's to epitomize a rear addition, construction issue. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
10 seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion? This is the one we had in 2007. Addition?
I'm going to just say it out loud, just let it go. I understand that ignorance isn't really a defense, but I don't think it's an unreasonable or unsightly addition, I don't see any reason to force them to remove it.
We've run into this before, and Matt, what do you do when you have a contractor that's skirting the rules to set, that ever get addressed?
The building department will address it if they are aware of who that person may be or what the company may be, but in this case, we're talking 13 years ago.
Right.
It surprises me that, you know, nobody had a phone call that they were doing work because of the confinement of the neighborhood and the clutter of it, but with that being said... Um, and the of it, but with that being said, the, the building department would be the ones that would enforce that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, question, bring it to Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yeah. That passes, number three. So Ms. Coloso and Mr. Stern presented that, it's for, uh, the rear deck and stairs. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Katie, thank you. Discussion?
Well, I asked the, uh, apparently silly question, but whenever I see, uh, a deck to a second floor, I just wonder why the, you know, with the, with the access, but it looked fine to me. The explanation was good.
The, the lot is one of the craziest lots. All right, bring it to a vote.
Yes.
Do you have, Mr. Terry? Uh, Brian?
Yes.
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 Terry, yes, can I say yes?
Yes.
Number four, Sasko Hill Road, Mr. Goodman, uh, uh, for Ms. Epstein, uh, petition, uh, permission to construct in-ground pool, pool equipment. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Brian, Kate, thank you. Discussion?
We, we talked about maintaining the fence. As, as a condition that was suggested.
Do you wanna move to amend, uh?
I move to amend, yeah, I move to amend the application to include the, the fence, the existing fence to remain, or to be brought up to the required building code requirements.
Or, or. Or.
Or end, end.
Is there a se- is there a second to that amendment to our, our motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Is there a discussion? The amendment? All in favor of the, uh, to, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any? No, okay, so the motion to approve as amended to put different, these fence for install a fence that's compliant with the code?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, it, it's, I mean, maybe I should have said that in the beginning, right now it's a solid fence. And that's what I was, I mean, that's what I was asking about, whether, well, it would be remained as a solid fence instead of that coming down, and there just being a open fence. So is that? Gonna be part of that condition?
There's, there's no, there's no one behind them. I think as long as the fence meets the safety, meets it, as long as, as long as the fence meets the safety standard, the side where the fence is, has no abutting neighbor, or within visual range.
Well, it's on the street side.
I think it does.
It does, it's on the street.
Does it?
Yeah, it's on a corner lot, so it's, you see it from the street.
I think I'm thinking of the other pool.
Yeah, I don't think we can require them, if they wanna change the style of their fence, I don't know why they would.
I mean, this privacy works in two ways, two directions.
But if they want to change that fence, as long as it's, you know, the required, the, the type of, the height of the fence that's required for that pool, I don't think we could condition on a, the, whether it's, you know, you can see through it or not, I don't.
That's fine, okay, I mean, the building department anyway has, is gonna require the fence to be what it needs to be anyway.
Yeah, they, they need a fence, there's no question.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Yes. I say yes. On to number five. Three Metal Road, petition of the Lefferts, trucking in ground pool. Uh, remember, this was also, it's another one, back to back, this is a corner lot as well. Entertain a motion. Thank you, Brian, first. Sorry, second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
It, I mean, the, the septic system is part of the barrier on the property, it's an existing underground feature that um, creates a hardship.
Yeah. Be a weird pool to have, uh,
I wouldn't be swimming there.
Sorry, I have to believe you were. Bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I said it. Number six. Oh, number six, um, eighty-six Lockwood Road. A Lynch's application, to say front and rear addition, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Seemed like a clean project.
Yeah, the hardship is pretty clear.
All right, bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Say yes? Number seven, four sixty-four Riverside Drive, petition for the DeRosa, Chase presented the application for them. It's to construct a, uh, story addition with stairs. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, Jane seconds.
You? All right, question?
There's been a lot similar work along that same stretch of Riverside, the, having the marsh behind it.
I've been, uh, I've been at the board at twelve, thirteen, I can't remember, Matt, uh, twelve, thirteen years.
When you, when you can't remember, it's long enough.
I've heard of so many of these houses, and it's just the lot is like four to six thousand square feet, and they can't use most of their actual property.
Right.
Look at it, it looks a lot bigger, but they can't use it. Yeah, we've, there's been, not that, not that there's precedent neighbors, but in this situation, every neighbor in the other, it's ten thousand square feet.
Right. And the F, the FAR they're proposing is still, you know, pretty much close to what they're permitted, so it's not too crazy at all.
Bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yeah.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
At that halfway point, guys, you guys wanna move some? Somebody else wanna do the moving now?
Number eight, fifty-three Baldwin Terrace, petition to accrue.
I can't hear.
Attention to elevate the existing structure to complete, second floor attic. Approve?
So moved.
Katie, Jane, Sarah.
Second.
Katie?
Second.
Katie.
Discussion?
When I saw the seventy-four percent, I thought it was a typo, but it's not, and I think that is a crazy, too big house for that lot. I mean, the purpose of, the purpose of FAR is to limit bulk on properties, and this is gonna be huge. And that whole neighborhood is turning into, you know, canyons.
I think Andrew's gonna get a tattoo of that, no?
So I'm not in favor of this at all.
I don't think the, uh, at least on just what I could see in the drawings, unless I misread something based on the lot size. If that's what they wanna do with their property and their, their neighborhood is moving in that direction, I, I didn't think it was insane. It's a lot, but I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the property itself is fair, and I don't think it's insane.
It's almost twice as big as it should be proportionally to the size of the lot. Katie, I can't hear you.
Well, I was, yeah, I don't want to interrupt you, um, what I, what I, I can't figure out, how are they going from twenty-four point seven percent coverage to seventy-four, are they, because they, they spend the footprint that much?
It's volume, it's, because it's.
We know.
Yeah.
They're, they're third floor, is that why?
Yeah, they're going up, they're making a two and a half story house on top of a garage, so it's.
Right.
Yeah.
That third sto- that third floor has to stay under seven feet, correct?
Well, but that, that's, they're not asking for a variance for the height, so I assume it's, that's in conformance, but still, overall size.
Well, they're counting three floors in their FAR. Raising it, and they're gonna have three floors, the third floor, because it's smaller footprint, it's going to be a higher ceiling height, so that's why you get seventy-four percent. Three, some of these houses, you figure, you count that attic as FAR because you don't count all you're not over the seven foot height.
Right.
Or, they're only, it over a little bit.
Right.
The twenty-three hundred square foot house, you know, is, that, that's the size of the, the house. And they're on a twenty-nine on just. It's, you know, if, it's, it's not, it's not a huge house, but it is on a small lot.
Mm-hmm. But they're all small down, they're all tiny down there.
Yeah.
But this one's gonna turn out, if this gets built, it's gonna be twice as big as it should be on that size lot, say, maxed out the FAR.
But what is the, what is it relative to what's in the neighborhood? I didn't get to drive this one.
There are a lot of houses like that down there, there are a lot of tall, skinny houses.
Yeah.
And that's my big objection to that whole neighborhood, because it's turning into, like, candy land.
Correct, I'm wrong, Matt, but some of those houses, you don't count, you, you're not counting the third floor, the top floor in FAR.
That's correct, yeah, most of the houses that are actually on Craig Court, the ones that have all received variances from this commission, uh, their third floor, uh, does not count because they kept it all under seventeen. Yeah.
Which means they can make the house bigger, right? That means they can make the house bigger, because they're not counting that third floor.
Correct, well, technically, yes.
Right, so this one is actually gonna be smaller, because their, their, part of their coverage or FAR is on the third floor.
Right, yeah.
That's why in the neighborhood, I don't, I don't.
Not either.
I don't either.
All right, bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
No.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Number nine, thirteen thirty-seven Fairfield Beach Road. Boulder. Back balcony. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, Sarah, second?
Jane seconds.
Uh, discussion?
I thought it was a reasonable application. My son disagrees, but I think it's a reasonable application.
Oh, he's, he's not an alternate, so, uh, depends on how much he convinces you with the screaming in your ear. All right, we'll bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
Number ten, seventy-six Orchard Hill. Five. That's two, one story addition, one side, garage and, uh, and a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, Sarah, second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane, all right, discussion, remember we had some opposition, um, one gentleman, which we all read, uh, we had some opposition, and they commented on that. Um, so, discussion?
I'll start, I think his primary objection is the fact that they beat him to the application. Because he wants to do, if you read his, uh, you read his objection, it seems to center a lot around the fact that he wants to do something on that same side of the property, and it would conflict with it. And I think he did well enough to answer the other concerns in the, uh, in the letter, and I also think the, the neighborhood's resounding support other than Mr. Burns, uh, speaks well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, a new garage, and, uh, it's on the same side as the garage, it's already there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jane, go ahead.
Um, we talked about, um, the maintaining shrubbery or fences as a condition, that's what was written in her application illustrations.
Do you wanna, uh, to amend?
Yes.
Our motion to approve to include the, um, visual screenage between those two properties?
Yes, I propose to amend the application to include, uh, screening either with shrubbery or fence between the two properties.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Um, I would, I would personally be fine approving the, uh, the variance as requested, uh, without the amendment, but, you know, I won't get in the way of the condition, um, I just think that any barrier wouldn't satisfy Mr. Burns, because it would only encroach close to his property.
Well, he talked about not, not wanting, you know, the view to be there, so at least this would um, take care of that, and it was offered by the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, let's vote on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed? Uh, the the motion to approve, uh, the amendment to the motion to approve, it has been approved, therefore, the amended motion to approve application includes uh, screenage to be maintained or re- replaced. Okay, let's, uh, discussion on that. They advocate to approve as amended.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think it satisfies the application.
All right, bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Number eleven, thirty-three thirty-six Pine Creek Avenue, Attorney Fallon presented the field. Epitomizing this apartment, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Terry, I'll give you that one, you s- Discussion, we had, Ms. Bunnett submitted, and, uh, trying to address that.
It was, it's an existing structure for, what, half a century? And, uh,
Michael, can I ask about LaGuardia, too, I mean, we're in DD for that, or?
I don't know, I don't know whose it is.
I don't either.
Who is that?
I don't know. Trying to figure it out, because I gotta close them down. Trying to figure it out, because I got to close them down if that's the case. I don't see anybody on, yeah, I don't see anybody on my list here that would be immutable.
Mr. Lindauer, LaGuardia, doesn't have a defined DD?
Sounds like an attorney to me.
Yep, looks like we got it. Sorry.
Okay.
I apologize, it was happening here.
Oh.
I got somebody on the other side of the computer on another call. We share an office.
So we are on, uh,
So some apologies to the attorneys on the phone, may, maybe listening. I was saying that I think it's completely reasonable, it's been an existing structure, it has its own address. Been a couple of decades at least, just let them it's already there.
Yeah. Great. Bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yes. Number 12, 693 Fairfield Mr. Mah, uh, Marza, we had Mr. Raymond, assisted him with comments, it's, third floor added dormer, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, second?
Jane, seconds.
Thank you, Jane.
Hey, Jane, I wanted to ask you a question on this, and this is, may just be a design thing. If you look at the drawings, this thing, the dormer itself seems to angle back into the house. Is that a structural component or just really lazy design?
I'm not going to, I can't answer that.
I just, I don't know if it served a purpose to limit footage or it was just bad padwork.
I can't make decisions based on aesthetics, one way or the other for this.
All right, uh, any other discussion? Bring it to a vote, uh, Brian?
Are there any left?
Yeah.
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Say yes?
I'm going tomorrow.
Okay, uh, number 13. Right? 290 Tuxus Hill Road, this for 290 Tuxus Hill LLC. Um, this is for the on that property, entertain a motion to
So moved.
Brian, sir, second?
Second.
Okay, you, discussion?
Um, uh, the, the argument for the presentation was that it's only three square feet bigger. And it, that doesn't really hurt, hurt the, uh, application, but you could, you could say the same about just leaving it the size that meets the requirements. Like, that's big enough too. I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear, but
I, I think that, I think the design element of, I think there was a design element of the sign um, that is manufactured, well, I think it's manufactured in some way, and that's the the, the corporate spec, and I think the guys already got the sign done. Um, also, I don't, I don't think it's a, I, I don't think it's an out of line request for the variance.
Um, I just, I, I've got to say this, and I'm probably going to repeat it for the next application, that the variance goes with the building, so, you know, we might like Aldi, and, okay, give them a little bit bigger sign, but the next tenant might be the Love Shack.
I was going to say the same thing.
And you're giving them, you know, an extra three, three square feet that they don't really need.
It might have
What's that? What?
Maybe rules in place to prevent that. Enough for, to know my position on signs, uh, and obviously Attorney Fitzpatrick addressed that because he's aware of it as well. The, the only times that I've ever allowed a slightly bigger sign, you know, something like this, where I think it's reasonable, is when the building is far enough away from the road where it makes sense, um, because that's in my, my opinion, that's why we have that, that size restriction in our regulations. You step back, I'd have a problem going a little bit, and this doesn't go beyond, it's only goes a little bit, so I don't have a problem with the Aldi sign.
Yep.
All right, put it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Cindy?
No.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Number 14, 290 Tuxus Hill Road, or, uh, 2590 Tuxus Hill LLC, this is for the, for in the core both size and number, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, second?
Second.
Katie, discussion?
So, I think the reasonable, I think the arguments presented by Attorney Sister Patrick were reasonable based on the size of the building number one, and I know excluding precedent set by, um, Stop and Shop is, you know, the purview of the board, but I think it's, I think it's arguable that they've asked for less on a much larger building. So to me, it's a reasonable request, I know I'm, it's part of what I do for a living, so it's, I may be something of an expert in my, in my own way, but it's, I, I think it's a reasonable request based on existing sign engineer.
I'll, I'll pick up, unless Jane, you want to go, I'll pick up where I left off.
Yeah, first of all, this, they're asking for something that's three and a half times bigger than what's um, permitted, and again, this is some, if we grant them a variance, it goes with the building, so when the store might go out of business, the next tenant might be that, you know, Love Shack or something else, and it's going to have giant illuminated signs going 24 hours a day.
I only agree with Jane, not necessarily on the Love Shack, but
You like, you, okay. Oh, whatever.
He can't hear you at all.
Can't hear you.
Phone is all bad. Trying again.
Hello?
Yeah, we still broken up.
How about now? No, can you hear me?
Little better.
Okay, uh, Mike, let me know if you can hear me away, but my point on this is, I don't like the number of signs on the front wall. We have Greenfield Street or whatever that is right there, it's angled, we don't need four signs on that wall, it says floor and decor, we know that the floor will sell, a floor place will sell tile, and will sell other things that go on a floor. Don't need lighted signs telling us all the other things, that's the purpose of my opinion, is the number of signs on, on a wall, I don't mind going up a little bit, but I don't agree with that many signs essentially repeat each other.
Um, can I add one more thing? Usually, a building like this has signs that big and that bright when it's on a main drag, like a Route One or a or a arterial road, but this is on Villa Avenue where the, you know, cars are going slowly. So it doesn't match the neighborhood even.
Also, on the board, that far back when Stop and Shop was approved, just, just so you guys know. Any other discussion? Okay. Bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yeah.
Jane?
No.
Katie?
No.
Terry?
No.
I say no. All right, uh, everyone, have a great holiday, thank you very much, uh, and we'll see you in January, and hopefully willing, next week, willing, we're back, uh, live in March.
Good night, everybody.
Holidays.
Be holidays.
Hey, I wore my Christmas sweater just for this, by the way.
Well, you should, it's December.
If you knew me, you'd know that's a huge step for me.
Bye, have a happy new year.
Happy December.
Happy New Year.